Councilmember Alvarado, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Perfect, thanks.
Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco Council's special meeting and regular workshop. The council thanks you for being a part of our city government. At special meetings, the council takes formal action on specific items and during the workshops only discusses issues with no formal actions taken. The agenda packets are available on the City of Pasco website at www.pascal.gov/agenda. Please note that the city council meetings continue to be held remotely and may be accessed through go-to webinar. This meeting is being also televised live on Pasco TV, Channel 191 on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland and also streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, and YouTube channel. This and previous council meeting video is available on the city's website. Through Broximation number 20-28, Governor Inslee extended the directive, making temporary changes to Open Public Meetings Act. These virtual meetings will continue until the OPMA restrictions are lifted. Lastly, the public may submit their comments and their questions for items not on the agenda by contacting the city manager or city clerk or using the feedback form on the city's website. And once again, thank you for coming tonight and joining us tonight. I'm actually going to isolate myself and I'm going through the same go-to webinar as the rest of the council members. I was out of town and my voice is a little hoarse and to try to be a good example and try to remain safe, we have, our council has the sanitizing gel, we've disinfected. But again, I'm just isolating myself to ensure that our staff is safe and that we keep our social distance. And also want to note that I did get tested today and I will tell you, it's an amazing site. Over 800 tests were taken today at the CBC site. And it's just a, just an amazing thing to see everybody being careful and wanting to know that they're healthy and safe. I'm sure for the holiday season coming up, so, and Thanksgiving Day coming up. So with those issues out of the way, I would, will go to a roll call, please.
Councilmembers Alvarado.
President.
Maloney.
President.
Milley. Roach.
President.
Mayor Potem Barajas.
President.
Councilmember Serrano.
President.
And Mayor Martinez.
President. Once again, thank you, Deborah, and thank you, council, for showing up tonight. Next, we'll rise for the pledge of allegiance, please.
Hey, Mayor, just let you know, I am here, just the thing cut out, so that's why, just letting you know that.
Yes, we actually saw you and said here, but thank you for letting us know. Councilmember Milley. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you for that. And yes, it'll be nice someday when we can all meet again and give a real pledge of allegiance together. Next, we're going to go to new business. And we have, first on our new business agenda, we have Two Rivers Behavioral Health Recovery Center, Lee Kerr, Two Health District Superintendent. And we have, is Adam on the line tonight?
Yes, Mayor, I'm here.
There you are. Okay, you want to, you want to give us an update and tell us about this item on the agenda?
Sure, Mayor, thank you, Mayor and council. So we have Mr. Kerr, who I think you're all familiar with, to give a brief presentation on what's going on with the Two Rivers organization. And then at the, after his presentation, I'll have a quick motion for you all to consider. So we'll turn it over to Mr. Kerr.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, it's good to see you, members of council, lots of staff. It's truly a pleasure to see you, even though it's not in, in the flesh. As indicated, my name is Lee Kerr, I'm the current superintendent of the Kennewick Public Hospital District. And we've been involved in a project for a little, well, actually, well over a year now, to establish a recovery center in Kennewick. I'd ask if John, for the first slide, first of all, let me say that I thought the agenda report was excellently prepared and succinctly tells our story. And as the draft letter is also perfect. So I probably ought to stop right here and just leave you to, to the reports that you received and the letter that you're considering. But let me, let me go on. First of all, I'm not going to spend a lot of time going through these slides because they're right before you. I do want to make sure that I'm not telling you things you already know, but rather leave an opportunity for you to ask you things you want to know. But I'd ask, John, to go to the next slide. What started this, this whole genesis was the 2019 Community Health Needs Assessment. We demonstrated there was a significant lack in the tri-cities of assistance for both primarily substance use disorder and, and mental health crisis. As you says there, there is, we are kind of remarkably unique because we're the only metropolitan area in the, in the state that does not have inpatient detoxification or inpatient residential. And so we partnered up with the Benton Franklin Recovery Coalition to, to, to seek a solution to that problem. That led to a discussion with Trios in Kennewick, who was repurposing their Auburn campus. And suddenly that facility became available. And one of the big problems we've had in the past is that there's been no active facility to be able to coalesce the services that are needed around. And this one suddenly looked very, very attractive. Our step, first step was to determine whether the building was eligible to serve this function. So we had the Department of Health come in to take a look at it. After a couple of prior trips to the tri-cities and finding facilities that were hopeful but were not compatible, they were excited about this facility because it is literally bed-ready. And, and as a result, they have indicated its eligibility for these specific purposes. The next step was to determine whether or not it was financially feasible to be able to provide these services. And then the second, the third element of that was to determine whether or not the costs of making the conversion justified the refurbishment of the facility or to go to a new facility. So there's just two other points I want to make here in this first slide. And that is, is that the studies that you see and the numbers you see in the feasibility study, which likewise is attached, are pre-COVID. So we know that even though at that stage we were above the state averages regards to suicide, addiction, overdose, those types of things, we know the situation is much more, is compounded now with COVID. And so we feel that not only was it an essential service needed at that time, but it is more so now. John, next. I'm not going to go into a lot of what the benefits are because I think they're self-evident. To those of us that have been, had family and friends that have been touched by the opioid addiction or mental health conditions, we know how pervasive it is, we know how difficult it is to deal with. And we know what a serious need there is in our community to be able to provide these services. And John, next slide. The benefits to the community are likewise significant. One of the things that we were looking at initially was to determine how best to be able to keep a continuity of service going. One of the things that's very obvious is that in most people's lives that are, that are affected by these diseases, there comes an event, whether it's a contact with the police, an emergency room, an overdose, a psychotic event, or, or family intervention, there becomes an event that gets their attention. And the time delay between this event and getting treatment has a growth, has a gross tendency to, to delay or defer or simply not proceed. It's kind of the window of opportunity. So the window of opportunity means that they have to have a treatment readily available. It also means that there are other benefits to be received in the community. One of the models, actually, the model that we're looking at is the one that's proposed by the Substance Abuse Mental Health Services Administration of the federal government. And the idea there is to provide a central location where those people that are in crisis can be taken rather than a jail or an emergency room for an evaluation and, and then moving, moving forward. So with that in mind, we went on to, to, we also discovered that there are significant benefits to the community. Miracle County, Arizona, has this type of facility. And while they're, they're larger than we are as far as the tri-city community, their findings were that the use of this facility by deferring officers from taking significant out-of-service time had a, had a, had a overall benefit of the, the cost of 37 officers. And so like I said, there's a, there's a, there's a, there's a municipal benefit to be received as well as the social and, and physiological benefit to be received. John, next. One of the things that's unique about this facility is not only the fact that it is literally bed-ready, in other words, it's got all the, all the physical facilities necessary. And it is in good shape as far as recent renovations. It's also in the right zone. So no zoning requirements, no conditional use permits or other permits if unnecessary to be able to locate the facility there. And all of the time that we've been discussing this, and you've seen it on the Badger Club, on editorials, as the one that's posted here, that the tri-cities as a whole is very supportive. In fact, I've had no negative comments, nor do I believe anybody from the coalitions likewise received negative comments in regards to this project. John, next. So as a result, like I said, we, once determining eligibility, we want to determine feasibility. We are very fortunate to secure the services of Ascension Rehabilitation, or Recovery Services, who is a national leader in this. They not only perform these types of evaluations, but they do this type of service. They have facilities throughout the United States for treating both mental illness and substance use, or substance abuse. And the approach they took was, I think was a very good one. Basically, what happened was they looked as if they were going to prepare, if they were going to perform these services. And so they did a significant in-depth. Now, one of the things to be noted as you look at this facility, pardon me, this facility study, this feasibility study, pardon me, was that there was somewhat of a pivot. As we sought information and support in the community, we have found that specifically with the counties and law enforcement, that, that substance use disorder is inextricably connected, in most cases, with mental health issues. And so it was hard or impossible to segregate those out. And so it had to really be addressed in a broader approach, under the caption of behavioral health, which covers both the mental health side and also the substance use side. So in the mental, in the study that you're going to see, as you look at the pro formas and the financial, it really addresses the revenues associated with substance use disorder as opposed to adding in the additional elements of the mental health side. So the second, of course, was looking at the facility. Now, when they say, said, well, this is bed-ready, my impression is, well, we could open the doors tomorrow. Unfortunately, there is a series of regulations that require certain unique conditions associated with these types of facilities. And so we, we secure the services of Arculus Engineering and Architecture in, in the tri-cities to perform that study. And that study is likewise, is attached as a part of the feasibility study that you have. Next slide. The Ascension Plan, as I indicated earlier, comes down to the concept of no wrong door. That 24/7, those people in crisis can come to a place and have an assessment and evaluation. And that there will literally be a door available for them to be able to walk through. The concept here is, is that once the assessment's been made, we will have, literally, on the first floor of the, of the campus, a detoxification center. And that detoxification facility is going to be divided into two pieces. One is standard detoxification for those voluntarily participating. And another portion, which is going to be secure for those persons that are participating as a result of court action or law enforcement. Now, the detox is probably one of the most critical pieces because it had, before a person can make any significant changes, they have to get the, the substances literally out of the system. And so that's the first step. The next step is continuing rehabilitation. And so literally, a person who completed the detoxification process could go upstairs to the residential treatment facility. And that way, that likewise is divided into two pieces. That which is riggeter, what we'd call Betty Ford facility, and that which is secure, that will be utilized for law enforcement, judicial, those people that are there under, under a judicial mandate. The study itself, like I said, uses this as a model. They made a determination that, and that's, you look at kind of the last page of that study and you'll see it reprinted at the conclusion under the pro forma, is that actually this thing will be self-sustaining. However, it will not be self-sustaining unless, if, if we have to either secure debt for the initial startup costs, acquisition, and conversion costs. But if we can avoid those, then yes, it can be self-sustaining. Literally, after year one, as you can see there, it's pretty doggone close, and year two, it goes positive. Next slide. Now, this is the hard part. To be able to put this facility together, there are a couple of elements that need to be addressed. One, of course, is the purchase price, and I'm going to discuss that just a little bit later, which is at $1.6 million. On top of that, we've got architecture and engineering costs and the overall construction costs with sales tax, which gets us up to a total for the repurposing process and acquisition at $14 million, just under $15 million. And so the size of the nut we're seeking to crack is essentially $15 million. Okay, next slide. All right, well, the next steps, as indicated, is that we are in the process of completing a negotiated purchase with LifePoint of the facility. They have been extremely generous though this entire process. You may be aware, the facility itself has an approximate value, an assessed value, of about $4.5 million. And they're willing to sell it to us for $1.6 million, which would include the existing campus, which is the old Kennewick General Hospital, that new office building, which is attached to the west, which is called the Spalding Building, and the Vettel Building, which is on this, literally on the north side of the, of the facility, which was previously the Nuclear Medicine Division. And in addition, there is a warehouse there as well. So that is, that is moving forward, and like I say, it makes it doable because of the purchase price. The second thing is, is the, the district has already secured $600,000 toward the purchase, which would essentially be the amount of the down payment. Next payment, or next, next slide? Okay, this is kind of the big piece, so there's two big pieces right now. And once we, once we conclude our negotiations for purchase, and that is, one is fundraising. As indicated, this thing really only cash flows if we can cover the costs of its initial startup. In other words, its acquisition costs, its conversion costs with all its taxes and those types of things, as well as its first year operating cost, which is approximately just under $1.5 million. So where do we get the money from? Looking at several sources, one, of course, is, is that we're looking for, what do you call SAMSA, the Substance Abuse Mental Health Services Administration grants available through the federal government, which we are pursuing. We've secured the services of a grant writer to assist us both with the federal and the state. The purpose for the endorsement letter is for us to be able to pursue this as a capital item on this next biennial budget. And so that's where a lot of the effort is going right now. We've had some very, very positive responses from our legislators. We're dealing with the Office of Financial Management, and we're hoping to be able to get this as a project that would be on the governor's proposed budget to go to the legislature right out of the get-go. So those are, those are portions of it. The other is, is that this probably won't be enough, where, you know, the state likes to come in, you know, kind of at the last possible. So we are, we, we're banking very, very heavily on both federal and state assistance. We will need some local assistance as well. We are seeking assistance from the counties and also from the cities at times, not at this time. Primarily, the reason that for, are seeking the local assistance from the governmental entities is that the only reason we would have a secure facility is to facilitate local county and city law enforcement. So we're going to be probably knocking on your door to see if we can get some assistance in regards to those, those costs. And the last element is going to be private donations. People here in the tri-cities that recognize this need, recognize the value of having these treated treatments for their family members and their friends at home, rather than have it to go somewhere distant and be separated during the time when they most crucially need the support and assistance. Next slide. Now, before I answer any questions, I want to go to the next slide. And that's what I'm asking for. And that is, one, the endorsement that you have proposed, which looks extremely, and then like I said, at some time, we're going to seek a pledge from the counties and cities to assist us on those portions of those funds that cannot be met or cannot be secured from, from grant monies. And with that, I have, I think so, I've got some very capable people out here that know the answers to all of the questions you might ask. I wanted to open to questions.
Well, thank you, Mr. Kerr. It, it is something that I think our community will definitely benefit from. Of course, there's going to be those challenges for the financial part of it. But let me start with our council. Does anybody have any comments they'd like to make, any questions they'd like to ask, Mr. Kerr?
This is Councilmember Maloney, I can kick it off.
Yes, Councilmember Maloney, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Kerr, always a pleasure to hear your voice. I was thought about you, I was actually thinking about you the other day, and so I'm glad to see you're working still so hard to make our community a better place. I just want to make sure I understand clearly, so when we're talking about financial assistance, I understood the, the financials indicate that it would be, this would not be for operating dollars, this would be for capital, the construction-type dollars instead. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct, that's correct. You know, like I said, once we meet that portion of it, the thing should cash flow. Now, I think there's some things that we'd be able to build into it as we get the model further down the pike. But yes, yeah, these costs that we're looking at right now are capital, acquisition and conversion.
So we're only, so that, it's only, the project's only a million dollars away from able, being able to be realized, something, something along those lines?
Well, maybe a little bit more than that, but yes.
All right, great, I just want to make sure I understood that this, that any, any ask was, at this point in time, might be a one-time ask, understanding that there might be some operating benefit down the line that could help our, our officers and firefighters perform their job and could, could realize some net ongoing savings for the, for the, for the city. So I look forward to it, I think the project's fantastic. I've heard about this for a while, I've read the editorials, I've read the study, I'm excited, this is something that our community needs, and I'm glad that we have, that we have people taking point on this. Thank you.
Thank you, from Maloney.
This is Councilmember Alvarado.
Councilmember Alvarado, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, and great, great to hear your voice as well, Mr. Kerr, you definitely are a great asset to our community. I, my question was around the private donation piece. I know that was a kind of a brief statement, but I'm wondering if there's, in the, in the coalition organizations that are leading this, is there a, perhaps some, some major efforts to try to, you know, see, see what, what kind of generosity comes from, from our different, you know, folks in the tri-cities who are very giving. We, we're in a region that, you know, folks really do care and people do really, you know, come out of the woodwork to give back, and we've seen that over and over again. So I'm wondering if there's perhaps some, some strategy or some concerted efforts that perhaps you can speak to?
Yes, yeah, thank you, you're dead on. I mean, we have, we're, we're known as a generous, generous community. And the coalition has been pretty well taking the lead in regards to fundraising. We've determined that probably a better way to do it is to create a separate foundation, which would essentially work very closely with coalition. And that foundation would be the fundraiser. We are in the process of organizing that right now. It would be, the influences would come both from the district and from the coalition. We've also investigated the services of a, a, a finance campaign organization to prepare, prepare a campaign plan. A lot of it's going to depend on how much support we get from both the state and federal governments for the, for the capital portion of it. But no, no, you're, you're dead on, you're dead on.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Alvarado. Mr. Serrano?
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Mr. Mayor, and thanks, Mr. Kerr. Nice to hear from you, not as nice as it was the other day when I saw you on the golf course. Quite frankly, golf is even better than this. But do you have a specific request that you're going to bring before the legislature? Can you speak to your timing and with which members of the state representative you've been working with, if at all? Or if, if you're going to need assistance on that front from the city as well, or can you walk me through that?
Yeah, I'd probably leave that to Michelle if she's on. But yeah, basically, what we're looking for right now is looking for bipartisan support in both the Senate and the House. And our local legislators have been very, very cooperative. And so from the House, we're basically looking for assistance from, what's it, Lauren Davis? You know, I remember one I could remember. She's a Democrat on the other side of the state, and then, of course, Representative Banky down here. And then also, we've got Sharon Brown, Senator Brown, a Republican from this area. And we also have a senator, a Democratic senator from the other side of the mountains as well, that's, that have indicated their willingness to sponsor. But one of the things we're looking at right now, though, is we're, we're, we're trying to kind of get a, a lead on the whole process by getting on the, on the governor's capital budget. And so that's why we're working right now primarily with the Office of Financial Management. But yes, no, well, yes, yes, we could use whatever assistance we can possibly get. And yes, that's, that's one of the strong efforts that we're going for at this time. And yes, we're trying to get it in with this biennial budget.
Thank you very much. Certainly happy to help where I can.
Wonderful. Thank you, Councilmember Serrano, anybody else?
This is Councilmember Roach, good evening, Mr. Kerr, thank you for being here. I had a question just about capacity and whether you could speak at all to what the capacity would be once doors were open? And how close we might be to capacity once those doors open?
Okay, really good question. If you still have the screen before you, you've got a picture of the facility on the conclusion there. And to give you an idea of what we're working with, we're only working with less than a half of this total facility score footage. It's that portion that you'll see, literally, the front half of the picture. And so it's about 45,000 square feet, and it provides sufficient room for about 83 potential beds. It also have, we also have another almost 45,000 square feet of undedicated property or undedicated space, which is available for future expansion and for other compatible uses. So there's a lot of space. And as indicated, one of the things that we're looking at is, there's a, there's a significant demand for pediatric transition. That is mothers and babies, babies who are born addicted. And there's only one facility right now that does that, and that's in Seattle. This is the, presently used as a birthing center, and it's got a state-of-the-art pediatrics ward to it. So it would be an ideal location for that. And that's actually been included in the, the, the conversion costs, about, so, about 5,000 square feet for that specific purpose. So yes, our, the pro forma that's identified, it's talking about, it uses an assumption of 139 patients per month, which is, like I said, that's just SUD that isn't going to the mental portion of it as well. But with capacity to expand dramatically.
Thank you, and what do we currently do with mothers who are, are having children with under, with substance abuse disorder?
Right now, the only facility is Swedish and Ballard. And so I think that especially those who would, who would be subject to certain complications are probably going there. Others, I think, are going literally on the resources that may be available in their home communities, which may not be specific enough or, 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 and the issue that we've heard about is being trained sufficiently to be able to deal with. specific enough or, 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 and the issue that we've heard about is being trained sufficiently to be able to deal with this, with the, with the situation.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Roach. Any, anybody? Well, you know, I, Mr. Kerr, I appreciate your presentation tonight. I, I'm looking forward to this and I understand that you're requesting that you get support with no financial obligations tied at this point. But, but when that time comes, you know, I'm hoping that there will be enough support and enough good that's being done there that one, that donations would come in. And two, that perhaps the money that would otherwise be used to treat these patients or these people would go towards, towards running the facility. So I, I think this is something that a city, a tri cities of our size needs. And, and I'll be, you know, voting in favor of this tonight. But with that said, thank you very much. And Mayor Protem, if you have no other comments or, or no comments, would you like to entertain a motion tonight?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Give me just a second. Let me go back to my agenda here real quick. Here we are. I'm hope to approve City of Pasco's support of the Two Rivers Health District's efforts to secure funding and development, and development a behavioral health recovery center to serve the tri-city region and authorize the mayor to sign the letter of support on behalf of the city council.
Okay, there's been a motion to approve the City of Pasco's support of the Two Rivers Health District efforts to secure funding and development. A behavioral recovery center to serve the tri-city region and authorize the Okay, now, now you can hear me. Okay, it, for some reason, it wasn't my fault this time, but it muted by itself. But anyway, with that, we have a motion on the floor to, to approve this letter. Do I hear a second? Okay, it's been seconded by Councilwoman Roach. I, I take it by the raise of the hand. Yes, okay. So all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. It passes unanimously. Okay, Mr. Kerr, thank you once again. It was a pleasure to hear from you and know that you're still very active and looking forward to hearing more from you in the future. Can everybody still hear me? Okay. With that, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. And that is for an approval of the W, excuse me, DWSRF loan application for West Pasco Water Treatment Plant. And Mr. Steve Warley, are you with us today? You are. How you doing tonight, Mr. Warley? I cannot hear you at this moment.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now. Thank you.
Great. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Tonight, we have before us an opportunity that I wanted to share with you. And our thought tonight was to get approval from council to proceed with a, a potential loan application or some funding for an improvement project at the West Pasco Water Treatment Plant. I'll begin with a little bit of background. Most of you may remember that in 2019, we adopted the Comprehensive Water System Plan. And as part of that plan, it was identified, needed improvements to the West Pasco Water Treatment Plant. And that improvement is to increase the water treatment capacity from 6 million gallons per day to 12 million gallons per day. Now typically, on a project like this, those improvements are usually funded through bond proceeds. But we have an opportunity right now to get a low interest loan from the Department of Health under their Drinking Water State Revolving Fund program. And so this is a program that provides a 20-year construction loan at an interest rate of 1.75% interest. And it has a maximum loan amount of 5%. The applications are due next week, Monday, November 30th. So that's the reason for bringing this to you this evening. So our request is to get approval from council to move forward with this loan application. As part of the loan process, a formal approval or motion by the council to move ahead with this application, including the amount of what is being proposed, is required. And so with that, be happy to answer any questions you might have related to this project.
Thank you, Director Warley. Appreciate it. And any comments and questions from the council? If not, Mayor Protem, would you like to entertain the motion?
Absolutely. I'm hope to approve the submittal of a Drinking Water State Revolving Fund Loan Application for the West Pasco Water Expansion Project for a loan amount of up to $5 million.
Okay, there's been a motion to move and approve the submittal of a Drinking Water State Revolving Fund Loan Application for the West Pasco Water Treatment Plant Expansion Project for a loan amount of up to $5 million. Do I hear a second?
This is Councilman Milney. I'll second that.
Second from Councilman Milney. Thank you. So all those in favor, this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. It passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Warley. And you know, if you can always get that interest rate a little bit lower, that would be wonderful.
We'll do what we can.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we have covered the two topics in our special remote, special, the remote special meeting. So we will now adjourn from this meeting. And we will open up our remote, our regular workshop meeting. And we have already gone through the exercise of the roll call and the pledge of allegiance and, and all our housekeeping issues with, so with that, we'll call the meeting to order and we'll move right along to item number four, verbal reports from council members. Is there any one of the council members that would like to report on anything for the last week or so?
This is Councilmember Alvarado.
Yes, Mr. Alvarado.
Two quick reports from Benton Franklin Council of Governments. We're still looking for our, our executive director. And we have some strong candidates and looking forward to, you know, bringing someone in who's going to continue the work of this organization. And so we're excited about the, the prospects. And then the second piece is, you know, a bit of bad news. We had a staff member with, I don't have the email in front of me, so. But we had a staff member from Benton Franklin Transit pass due to COVID. He was a longtime member of the community. So towards the end of the meeting, I'll, I'll come, I'll circle back around under general discussion, just to be able to honor him a little bit.
Thank you, Councilmember Alvarado. Appreciate that. Anyone else have anything to report?
Yes, this is Councilman Milney. And I wanted to report on the two meetings that I attended this last week. On Wednesday, I attended the Pasco School District's Guild and Technical Advisory Meeting, in which we went over Scott Chater and James Mundon, went over their, both their different shops and how prepared they are and how they got it extra clean for the schools, for the students coming back or when they come back. It was actually a really impressive presentation. And then also on Thursday, I attended the TRIDEC meeting, which we went over the Franklin County Cares Act, the 273 grants for $3,265,000. And just some other good things happened in our community and hopefully we'll get through all this and things will start moving forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Milney. Appreciate that. Anyone else? If not, I would just like to end this, this portion of on the agenda with just saying that thank you to Mayor Protem Barajas for covering for me last week. Appreciate that. So next, we'll move right along to item number five on items for discussion. And tonight, we're going to start with renewal agreement with visit tri cities for the promotion of tourism. Mr. Zabel, do you have, you want to kick us off with that one?
Yes, good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. So as Mayor mentioned, this is for the TPA renewal. And just as a reminder, TPA provides assistance to the city, matter of fact, all three tri cities in the area of tourism conventions and tournaments. And so their, their job basically is to bring people to our community. They've been doing that for the three cities since 2004. Under this agreement, the current agreement expires the end of 2019. Renewal agreement largely is, is, excuse me, the renewal agreement is largely the same as the agreement that's in effect and has been in effect for the past several years, with the exception of section two. Section two, subsection one, and I'll just kind of go through it really quickly for council's information. And it relates to provision for an economic downturn. I think one of the things we've all kind of learned over this past six months, eight month period is that things can happen that are really unexpected, like we're all experiencing right now. And so we thought it wise to include that in this agreement. And basically it defines an economic downturn as a 15% decline in motel taxes over a period of six months. And there are some conditions we would kind of walk through in the event of such a downturn. The primary ones being that such a reduction would trigger a joint conversation between all parties to mutually agree to, to a contract of payment, probably different than what the, what the contracted amount is, which is the average of the previous years for that same period. And should we, should we be unable to come up with a mutual agreement? The adjustment to the tri cities visitor convention bureau would be reduced at the same percentages of the decline over the previous six month period. So that if we drop 17%, for instance, their, their payment would be, would be dropped 17% unless we could agree otherwise. And with that, the agreement, as I said, is largely changed. Staff would recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Zabel. Council, do you have any comments or questions on this topic? If not, then Mr. Zabel, we can look forward to seeing it on, on our next meeting agenda. Okay, next, we'll move right along to item B, the 2020 Proposed Budget Supplement. And I believe Director Rija is on, good evening.
Evening, Mayor and council. You've been hearing about budgets quite a bit in the last couple of months. And this is still a budget document, but for a different period. We've been looking to the future in the last two months. And this is more of what is happening with this year's budget. Overall, the city's biennial budget, we have a biennial budget, which is our first. And this is a supplement request to that biennial budget. And one thing to really be cognizant as we're talking about budgets and we've touched on the topic a little bit is to recognize that each fund is its own unit. So even though City of Pasco owns over 30 funds, they're considered accounting wise and use wise, their own each unit. And so transfer between them need to be accounted as separate transactions. And then the expenses within them become, are, are done within each fund. And also, we, this supplement includes the fact that we will have carryover for our capital projects, which is something that we've not done in the past. Some of the highlights are the fact that we had a lot of debt, especially in our Chapel Hill area that was paid off by our lien holders earlier than we had anticipated. And then of course, there's COVID and revenues and expenses that are related to the pandemic revenues, as in some of the grants that we've received from the federal government and expenses for labor, like overtime and mostly services and supplies. Services like janitorial supplies, deep cleaning, even legal help for different proclamations, emergencies, and also understanding some of the federal laws that were passed due to COVID-19. Next slide, please. Just to, just because of the dynamic nature of this year, we thought that it would be good to break out some of our supplement requests into four major categories. One is your general activity, which is just what you probably think about when you're thinking about budgets. Your regular operation cost and revenue and expenses and your capital expenses as well. The other one is your transfers, loans and subsidies or any accounting changes. And those are, and we separated them out because usually transfers and subsidies and some of the accounting changes are things that happen in between funds, so they're just transfers. But we do need authorization from council. As I mentioned, each fund is its own entity and we have to treat them as such. And there are some funds that we have among the 30 plus that we have at the City of Pasco that are called clearing funds. And these are funds that where funds come in and they're transferred out. Sometimes it's to external agencies and sometimes it is for a specific function like our capital, our general capital fund where revenue comes in from all of the other funds to fund a project and it gets constructed in there. And at the end of the year, the city is obligated to make it whole or essentially zero. And so it's considered pass through. And because it's COVID season, we have tourism related funds as well that we aggregated together just so that council can clearly see the impacts of the COVID-related impacts to the tourism industry and how the staff is handling some of those funds at this moment. So overall, in the general activity, you're looking at about $14 million in revenue beyond what we have currently budgeted, but then also $6 million in expenses. A large part of the revenue is cares grant and G and T revenue that has come in more than we had anticipated. And also sale of assets, among many other things. And we will go into more detail. There's quite a few slides here that I will try to move through quickly. In terms of expenses, we essentially COVID-19 related. We've also purchased some assets that we had not anticipated. And those make up for, for majority of the expenses. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, some of the transfers in between funds or accounting activities, I'll give you a few examples of this. The LID is essentially our Chapel Hill LID. When we submitted the budget, we really weren't anticipating the speed of activity, the building that happened in the area. So we were expecting the, the, the people to not pay the, the liens as quickly. But as you can see, the area has grown quite quickly and we were, we were getting paid back for our Chapel Hill LIDs at a much higher rate than we had anticipated, which results to an increase in expenses as well, because we're just asking council to allow us to pay back those debts at a quicker rate, because we don't want to hold on to the money. And general fund is the fund that funded the LID. And hence, you will see that $1.3 million increase in revenue for general fund. And so that kind of gives you an idea of how an activity in one fund can impact another fund or maybe even multiple funds throughout our balance sheet. Also, we've had some accounting changes, which is the $2.5 million. Essentially, the state asking us to, our state auditor's office asking us to record all of our BNO taxes in our general fund rather than directly recording it to some other funds. However, then we take the, the, the general fund, we transfer the money from general fund to these other funds. So it's a net impact of zero. But just as a reminder, we do need Um, but just as a reminder, we do need to ask Council for authorization for every penny, um, that is spent. And when we think about every penny that is spent, it is not just City of Pasco as a whole, but we have to go down to the each fund. Uh, also, some of the, uh, transfers that we are, um, requesting and we've kind of talked about it in the past are, um, some, um, funding from sewer, uh, services and our Economic Development Fund for, uh, our capital, uh, Columbia East Lift Station. So you'll see that one point five million and three million dollars. And please stop me if you have any questions. Uh, next slide, please. And these are some of our clearance accounts, uh, school impact fees and TPAs are, uh, accounts that are transferred. We, we collect the revenue and we transfer it over, uh, to Pasco School District or Visit Tri-Cities depending on the fund, uh, and also our General Construction Fund where the, the, the sole activity in that fund is to receive revenue from granting agencies or, uh, or our internal funds and construct, um, whatever project, uh, is funded. So, yes, Mr. Mayor?
Director, uh, excuse me for interrupting, um, but real quickly, explain to me why the expense is higher than the revenue on the school impact fee?
Uh, we were, um, there is a little bit of a lag in terms of when we, uh, fully reconcile the account and we send it out, uh, but usually it's just that one month lag where we do not know exacts. And, uh, we had done some accrual last year and it didn't pan out exactly what we had anticipated. So we just need a little bit of an adjustment there.
Thank you.
Next slide, please. Uh, some of the tourism-related, one back, thank you. Uh, some of the tourism-related funds, uh, you will see, uh, decrease in revenue, which is of course to be anticipated. Uh, but you will also see decrease in expenses as well. And this is mainly, uh, related to staff being conservative, but also the, uh, LTAC, the Lodging Tax Advisory Group, uh, being conservative with the funds. Uh, there were also a lot of canceled events, um, during the year. So, uh, events that were planned and distribution that was planned, uh, did not happen. And those are getting carried, not carried over, but next year when, uh, when those activities will resume again, uh, they will be getting the funding that they had requested this year. Uh, with track, it's a little bit of a different story. We do not know the full impact yet. Uh, this is just an estimate from, uh, from me in terms of how much we, uh, expect the subsidy for, uh, the fund to be, or for the service to be. Next slide, please. So, uh, on the slides moving forward, I'm going to be going into a little bit more detail, but I, there, but there's quite a few slides, so I'm going to try to move as quickly as I can. Um, with the General Fund, um, just the operating cost, uh, this is mainly related to our local, uh, CARES grant in terms of revenue, but then also some COVID-related, um, expenses as well. Uh, there is, um, we also had a little bit of a higher-than-expected sales tax and building permits, as I've, uh, mentioned to the Council before. Uh, and overall for, uh, for expenses, there were a new federal, uh, leaves that, uh, the city would not get reimbursed for, uh, that we have to account for and anticipate as well for the, the next month. Uh, but then also all of the, um, deep cleaning and, um, the business assistance grants and the utility grants and, uh, overtime related to, uh, COVID nineteen and all of the labor, um, Plexiglas, things like that. All of the activities essentially that we have, uh, performed to combat COVID, um, it, majority of it, um, is within General Fund. Next slide, please. With capital cost, uh, we are, uh, requesting two point seven million dollars increase in capital cost. This is not related to increase in any of the projects, but more of, um, we have, we issued our LTGO bond back in two thousand and nineteen, has been almost exactly a year. And, uh, one of the, uh, requirements of bonds are that we, we spend it in a way that we promised our bond, bondholders, we were going to spend it, but then also in a timely manner, and that is critical as well. We do not want to hold on to bond proceeds for a long periods of time. Uh, and, um, we have quite a few projects, especially related to fire, that, uh, were already allocated, uh, by using our internal, um, uh, fund reserves. Um, and, uh, because of how good the bids came in and that there would be carryover or leftover funding, uh, we are basically requesting Council to swap the funding source for some of these projects. Um, so not an increase in projects for, for most of this fund, um, or this request, essentially a swap from our Capital Improvement Fund or the REIT money, um, to, uh, our LTGO proceeds. Next slide, please. And, um, some of the, um, other activity are essentially, um, payoffs of loans or any, um, transfer activity that was happening between funds. Um, I, I will say that Council has already reviewed a lot of these loans, interfund loans already. And we did have a resolution that was passed last year. However, uh, I'm sure Eric, uh, our attorney will agree with me here. Uh, sometimes it's a couple of words that gets you in trouble. And, uh, when we wrote the resolution, uh, we included a language that said loan authorization, but not budget authorization. And though we might be being too picky here, uh, we just wanted to make sure that we were safe and, uh, because we did not have that specific budget authorization language in the resolution, we're just bringing it back to you so that there's no issues in future. Next slide, please. Uh, REIT, uh, we, of course, have, uh, increase in revenue and this is mostly related to, um, uh, very high real estate activity, which we all know about, but also it's, uh, higher home prices as well than what we had anticipated. And, uh, on this side, you see the flip side of expenses. In fact, I, um, I should have done a negative there instead of increase of two point two million. But, um, uh, what we're saying is let's use the funds that were allocated from REIT to, um, General Fund, uh, the, the LTGO proceeds. Next slide, please. Street Fund, uh, we've talked about this fund quite a bit in the past. Uh, of course, it's been a not a good year for this fund. Uh, there's been decrease in, uh, motor vehicle fuel taxes because people are not driving as much. Uh, also, this fund receives a significant amount of, uh, funding from our overlay fund. Uh, and we were not able to do, uh, a lot of our planned work due to COVID nineteen-related restrictions. Uh, however, this year, we also looked at all of the resources, um, that are required through our public works operations and realized that there were some people and some vehicles that the street fund was funding, uh, that probably would be better allocated elsewhere. So, um, if, if that was not the case, uh, then you would see some significant, um, decreases in revenue for this fund. But because this fund was able to sell some vehicles, but then also get the money that they'd been saving to, uh, replace those vehicles, the revenue at this time looks good. Uh, and of course, expenses have gone down as well because overlay work requires supplies and services and rentals of, uh, specific equipment that we, we did not have to. Uh, this fund has, um, is limps along each year and, uh, which is okay. Uh, but I would recommend that, uh, we give this fund about four hundred thousand dollars in subsidy from General Fund. And the reason for that is as we're looking into the next month, we do not know what kind of snow event we're going to, uh, encounter. And I do not want to bring Council in because we have no funds, a balance at all to do anything with and have to make an emergency transfer from General Fund to, to this fund. Um, and I, and I do believe that at this point, transferring those funds would allow, um, the street fund to operate in a manner that it gives it a little bit of a breathing room, uh, but also allow public works to work through their work plan, um, move, uh, past the impacts of COVID, uh, and, uh, and be operating in a, in a much normal manner. Next slide, please. Arterial Street Fund, uh, same issue here, decrease in motor vehicle fuel taxes, uh, and some increases in, in expenses, uh, because of some professional services costs that we are not anticipating for, uh, some of our, uh, capital projects like Ridley Drive and signage and striping at Road sixty-eight and Argent Road Improvement. Next slide, please. Um, I want to, to Impact Fund, uh, is, um, is a fund what, where we receive, uh, impact fee from development and a large part of the revenue is essentially higher than anticipated growth. Uh, and increase in expense is mostly related to our Louis Street, uh, Overpass Matching Funds. Uh, we've been working with different funding agencies and granting agencies. Uh, and at times we have to kind of spend our money to, uh, move some of the projects along and that's what you're seeing. Next slide, please. Uh, very, uh, small, uh, expense with the Martin Luther King Fund and, uh, mostly related to, uh, actually overhead cost allocation. So, um, uh, each fund gets, uh, overhead cost allocation for, uh, activities like, um, city manager, HR, finance, things like that. And this year, uh, MLK Center got a little bit more than what we had anticipated. And also on top of that, we had the COVID nineteen-related impacts to salaries and supplies. Next slide, please. Ambulance Fund, uh, we talk about this fund in almost, uh, an opposite scenario, uh, or at least we have been in the last four, five years. This year, I'm happy to report that we have, uh, revenue that has exceeded our expectations in this fund and it's mostly related to our GMT reimbursement. Uh, GMT is ground emergency management transport, I want to say.
Medical.
And, um, um, mostly refunding or, um, make, trying to make cities whole for our Medicaid transports. And City of Pasco has a high volume of, uh, Medicaid transports and, uh, GMT program has been, um, an amazing, um, revenue source for the city. Uh, I will caveat that, uh, this is a new thing for us and I do believe it's going to take us at least another couple of years to figure out exactly how this reimbursement works. We've not been through an audit from, um, the, uh, Centers for Medicare, um, and Medicaid yet. And so we do not know what that experience is going to look like and what that will result in. Um, but, uh, I'm happy to report that we are definitely getting more than what we had anticipated when we set the budget for GMT. Uh, and of course, uh, COVID-related, uh, uh, costs as well for this fund. Um, especially in ambulance, there's been a lot of PPEs, um, that we have, um, expended that were not anticipated. Next slide, please.
Director Sigil, I, I'd just like to call attention and thank your team. Um, I mean, that is for the past three, almost four years that I've been on Council, we have been operating in the red tremendously in that fund. So to see that type of black number, um, you know, it shows, yeah, it's great that we're getting reimbursed well by, by the federal government, by the CARES monies, but also obviously, as you've mentioned, your team has worked, um, on that issue. So I, I would like to give kudos where they're due, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Serrano. Um, definitely without chief gear driving us, it would not happen. Um, uh, some of the other activities, and I will just call this a bean counter activity. You have, you've seen this many, many times before, uh, the seven hundred K, uh, subsidy, uh, that was approved, uh, last year by Council. And, uh, what we realized, uh, is that, uh, this is a balance sheet items and to correct the balance sheet, we have to kind of come through the income statement, which is where Council makes authorization. So, uh, we just need your authorization to actually complete that subsidy, which we were, we had not anticipated when Council, uh, provided this subsidy, uh, in two thousand and nineteen. Next year, please, uh, next slide, please. Uh, Cemetery Fund, um, the same, uh, increase in revenue as expense. Many times we, uh, buy ser, uh, supplies and services, um, with, uh, with demand. And so you will usually see the revenues increase or decrease, uh, with, uh, expenses as well. Next slide, please. Uh, Boulevard Maintenance Fund, uh, really, um, small one, but, um, we wanted to show, uh, how growth throughout the city is, impacts almost a lot of funds. Uh, and even though a hundred and forty thousand is not huge amounts of money compared to our General Fund or some of our ambulance fund, um, still, you see the impacts of growth in even the smallest of the funds of the city. Next slide, please.
Ms. Sigil, if, if you could?
Yeah.
Um, back, back one side on the Boulevard Fund. I know we've talked in the past that the, uh, impact fees for the Boulevard Fund, um, may not keep into the future, uh, keep up with the, the cost of maintaining them, given that it's a one-time fixed cost that we're receiving and, but we maintain the boulevards in perpetuity. I, I know we talked in the past about possibly updating that, what that fee looks like. Has there been any progress on that? Is there, or is it, is this a topic that for later?
If I could, if I could, if I can jump in here, uh, we, we had did, we did start on an effort and, uh, that was going in earnest early this year. And, uh, probably one of the departments hit as hard as any has been ACNS. And so we really have not, the folks have been working on that, uh, have been a bit distracted, uh, as well as finance for the same reason, uh, COVID reaction. And so, uh, we're hopeful of being able to be, uh, start that effort anew, uh, over the next several weeks.
Great, deeply appreciate that. Just, um, thank you for the update.
Uh, Athletics Fund is, uh, another fund where, uh, impacts of COVID have been significant. Uh, however, um, a lot of our, uh, activities in this fund are services that we procure and then provide the services to our residents. And hence, the revenue and expenses have kind of gone down together. Uh, next slide, please. Golf Course. Uh, now, this is a fund where, uh, unfortunately, uh, when revenues go down, expenses do not go down with the same proportion. And, uh, mostly because it is, um, it is very, uh, you cannot just let a golf course, uh, go if, um, there's nobody golfing there. Uh, and of course, uh, we also had increased expenses related to, um, COVID nineteen impacts and understanding how to operate, uh, within the guidelines and things like that. So unfortunately, with golf course, you're looking at a decrease of revenue of about four hundred thousand, but not really any significant, um, uh, increase or decrease in expenses to go along with that. Uh, there's still a month and sometimes if it's really, um, cold December, uh, you will see no revenue and there might be a few expenses coming through. Uh, but if the, if the December is mild and people are out golfing, it might be a different picture. However, I do want to add that, um, many times, um, um, a lot of the revenue comes from your, uh, restaurant and the pro shop. And so if those are closed, then that also reduces the revenue as well. And at this point, our recommendation is that we, uh, let things be and do an overnight loan, which staff is allowed to do, um, only in rare occasions. And, um, and see how the next year goes and, and Council might see some requests come from, uh, from staff about this fund in the following year. Next slide, please. Senior Center Fund, uh, very similar to athletics as well. Uh, we, um, it's very much pandemic-related on both revenue and expenses. Next slide, please. Uh, Revolve Abatement Fund, um, in, in post-years, I probably would not include this fund, but we wanted to, uh, show you, uh, some of the increase in revenue just from your real estate activity. Sometimes it's the liens, uh, that get paid off in this fund and those are hard to predict because sometimes these liens have been on the property for many, many years. Um, so increased real estate activity throughout the city also helps in this kind of, um, uh, fund as well where, um, there might be liens placed on the property and during the process of sale, uh, the city is able to get paid for some of the services that have been provided years earlier. The city is able to get paid for some of the services that have been provided years earlier. And also reduction in expenses because we are not doing as much active abatement activity due to COVID nineteen. Next slide, please. Marina Fund, with Marina Fund, there's a lot going on, which is very unusual for this fund. And we did have an insurance recovery for the dock replacement from prior years. The Docker Placement A or Dock A. And this fund, because of that construction activity, it also had higher than expected cost allocation. Because our model kind of looks at the expenses as well. We will also, next slide, please, there's another component to this fund. Where there's an increase to expenses, one is the loan that council had approved in prior years. We will come to you on December seventh to request an extension for that loan. Because of the activity going on with Dock B now. And we are awaiting insurance decisions on that Dock B. And there's still some work that needs to be done that we cannot wait. So we will be asking for an extension of that loan that council had passed last year for only a year. But now that we have more going on, we will be asking for an extension so that we can float this fund till. And insurance payout is made. Next slide, please. Park Development Fund, again, impact of growth, we are seeing more in revenue or expecting more in revenue. The expense decrease that you see is removal of the animal shelter, the Little League parking lot. Usually you would have expected us to just carry over this project, which is how our new process would work. However, the the parking lot project is actually not scheduled for the next biennium either. And we're kind of waiting on some of the decisions to be made around the animal shelter. So at this point, we have removed that project and hence reduction in expense. Next slide, please. There's a lot going on in the Economic Development Fund as well, we sold some of our assets. And there was also facility, facility plan that for the reuse facility that had happened. Within this fund that it got reimbursed for. And then expense on the other side is also purchase of a land that council approved recently. And some of the other farm activities, sometimes when a pivot is broken, those things are pretty expensive to fix. And they cannot exactly be estimated or foreseen. Next slide, please. And the one point five million additional increase is mostly related to the capital project. Of the Columbia East Force Main and Lift Station. And Economic Development Fund would be funding that project partially. And that is something that we've talked about in the capital projects process. Next slide, please. And we talked about this already, but essentially all of your tourism related funds and what they look like in this slide. Next slide. LID, this is a really good news. In that we've been able to get almost five point three million dollars more than what we had anticipated. With our Chapel Hill LID, and that is really directly related to how quickly that area has developed. And we were anticipating a certain. Payback rate for the general fund because that is how the project was funded. And at this point, we're upping that that rate or requesting that we up that rate. So that this fund and the lien holders do not have to pay as much interest. Next slide, please. And General Construction Fund, just essentially, it's an in and out fund. So any increases to the projects that we talked about in the arterial or overlay or the street fund, you will see those impacts here. Next slide, please. Utilities Fund for operations, pretty much. It's an anticipated insurance recovery for the embankment failure that we discussed with council last week. And a little bit higher than anticipated revenue overall. And same on the on the expense side as well. Next slide, please. Overall, in the in the utilities fund with the capital, there's there's few projects kind of make up that one million. There's some changes to the capital projects, costs and schedule. And large part of the million dollars in increase is related to the investment from sewer to reuse facility for the Columbia East Lift Station. Next slide, please. And Equipment Replacement is our fund where essentially all of the funds save money. It's almost like your savings account to replace your vehicle. And a tricky part with this fund is the is the fact that when one thing happens here, it could go in and affect five other funds. And that is exactly what has happened this year. A large part, more than half of the the revenue and expense you see here. Is related to one activity, which is the the transfer of vehicle between street and utilities. But then also paying back the the savings that street fund had accrued over all of this time. To replace those specific vehicles. And there were some increases to the vehicle costs that were not budgeted for. And then there was one vehicle that was not anticipated that we had to replace. Next slide, please. Old Fire Pension. This is a fund that we manage, it's an internally managed investment portfolio for pension. For our firefighters pre left one. And we sell, we have, we invest the money within the fund and we sell off the investments. As we need to make pension payments. And at this point, we had anticipated less revenue. And usually it's a little bit easier to do than you think because we're not exactly sure what our. Proceeds from the investments are going to be our dividends. And so at this point, we have to sell some of our investments themselves and liquidate them to make our pension payments. So those are the gains on investments from the sale that you're seeing. With that, I believe I'm really, this is my last slide, I promise. As as council is familiar, we do a lot of inter and intra fund loans. And usually intra fund, intra fund loans are between two different funds. And intra fund loans are usually between the same fund, but between services. And that usually happens only with our utility fund because there's some pretty big services within there. We do anticipate to come to council with one inter or intra fund loan next week. And then an extension of the Marina Loan. And the reason that we need the intra fund loan for our reuse facility is. We're awaiting some drawdown from federal and state grants that has not come to fruition yet. And we've been working on this issue, our Public Works Department has been. And so we're we're awaiting that, but at this point, we will really need a loan document to to make sure that we do not have any audit issues. With that, I will take any questions that you have.
Thank you, Director Riechel, these are very important topics and. Yeah, I sure appreciate you manipulating all this so that so that things could get done in an orderly fashion and also making sure that. That we keep compliance with with these financial funds, so any comments from the council? If not, then thank you for that report and. It was thorough and appreciate all the work you guys put into it. And you know, these are long topics, long things we talk about, but these are important. And we understand the importance of it and appreciate the work you do to keep us. Not only on budget, but but in compliance, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, next we'll go into our next topic. Which is a continued discussion on ORDS, two thousand twenty one, two thousand twenty two, operating and capital project budget. Mr. Sable, you want to kick us off on that one?
Absolutely, Mayor, and good evening again, Mayor and Council. So we've had a number of meetings over the past several weeks, several weeks regarding the two thousand twenty one, two thousand twenty two. Biennial operating and capital budgets. December seventh, we anticipate council taking final action and we had built into the schedule. This time to answer and and follow up any on any questions we could not. Answer with a high degree of confidence and accuracy during the presentation itself. We've managed to get through the presentations without a whole lot. Hanging out there, matter of fact, the the one item I think that we wanted to respond to tonight. And the remaining question was a little much to try to answer last week. And that has to do with a question. Council came up with during the presentation of the capital budget is the difference between the. Twenty one through twenty six Capital Improvement Plan and the twenty. Twenty one, twenty twenty two preliminary capital budget. And so that first year of that capital plan, it was pointed out, it does differ from. The the preliminary capital budget and I will share with you, we had an opportunity to take a look at that. We prepared a spreadsheet that provides remarks on at least those projects that are significantly different. But largely, the differences are due to the carryover. And so we've tried to indicate that in the in the plan. And so you you might see a project budgeted for one amount in the plan. That may have had some dollars in this year that's that are getting carried over. And so that full amount is not being carried forward, only the additional we might need. And in some cases, the project, for instance, Peanuts Park improvements is not even in the plan. It's in the carryover, so you don't see that in the in the preliminary capital budget. So that's that attributes for a lot of the differences you're seeing. There are also some things that, you know, you learn between. June, when that plan's basically put together and brought to council. And then October, November timeframe, when you get to see it again, those first two years as part of your budget. Projects might change, we might not, we might not have received a grant we were hoping to get, which makes that project unsecured. And so we weren't in a position to bring the capital. But the difference in the CIP plan and the capital budget is the capital budget. For the most part, unless we're pretty, unless we're pretty sure that we're going to be getting a grant. Or we're going to be issuing debt as discussed with council for a revenue bond or something. Those projects are not going to typically be seen in your biennial budget. So if it's not funded, it's it's not going to come forward, even though it might be in your other plan now. You you will note in the in the spreadsheet, there are some projects that weren't able to be funded, but we were able to put some money towards them. Basically to keep that project moving and get it shovel ready as we look for other funding opportunities. One of those, for instance, being Fire Station eighty five, which is in your in your, the first two years of your CIP budget at six point. Seven five million and what you see in your capital budget is about four hundred fifty thousand. That's basically for architectural and geotech and some civils. So we can get plans ready to go and have that project ready to move forward. If staffing and a staffing, funding for staffing and the construction of the facility itself. Materializes during the next next couple of years. So with that, I don't know that I want to spend your time going through every one of the projects. But you've had an opportunity to look at the spreadsheet, the spreadsheet. Again, provides the comparison between the adopted CIP and the proposed. Capital budget and then there are marks in the column, if we can provide any further explanation on any of those. I'm available, Finance Director, Public Works Director and ACNS Director, all available to answer any questions council may have.
Thank you, Mr. Sable, council, any questions or comments?
Yes, Councilman Maloney.
Go ahead, Councilmember Maloney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Mr. Sable and staff for for helping put this together. It really does help crosswalk between, you know, what we approved, you know, six months ago. Understand there are substantial changes and so I just, I just really appreciated that walkthrough. So because again, me trying to do that manually on paper was, I'll say, non trivial. So the thing I I think the thing that stuck out to me most was that it looks like we're not going to be able to complete a number of of parks projects that we were really hoping for. And that's really unfortunate, I guess, for for quality of life. But I understand that 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 can be one of the more volatile sources of funding for anything we're doing in the city. Got to have water moving, we have utility funds, we have other things like that, parks can be a little tougher. So I just want to highlight, I guess, for anyone that's watching that, that I think my biggest takeaway is that. That Parks Master Plan that's in our goals that staff has proposed is going to be, I think, a fantastic way of of moving forward. To make sure we're prioritizing and have a concerted long term effort on how we're going to get get those parks and other facilities like that built. So appreciate appreciate the the hard work staff and that was the only question slash comment I had was just related to that, so thank you.
So and I and I appreciate that comment, Councilmember Maloney. And I I think this, I agree with you, I think this was a really valuable thing to put together. I I kind of wish we hadn't, I wish we'd have thought about it sooner and we'll make this a part of our process going forward.
All right, thank you. Anybody else with comments or questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Sable. Next, we'll move along to the next item on the agenda. And that was going to be the ordinance of PMC six point zero five point zero one zero definitions, potentially dangerous animals. Mr. Radkai, you want to kick us off for that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, good evening, Zach Radkai, ACS Director. Following up on the requests for additional information from the November ninth workshop. Real quick with the potentially dangerous dogs, potentially dangerous animal ordinance. As you all know, council has instructed staff to facilitate a process by which council could consider the retention amendment or removal. Of specific references to specific dog breeds that are currently within six point zero five point one zero zero one, zero one zero of the Pasco Code. Most recently, actually just coming up, almost a year ago, we did clarify some canine good behavior testing provisions. To conform the Pasco Municipal Code to the RCWs. And then the information we brought to you on the November ninth workshop was mainly stemming on. Data and trends that we had pulled together for dog bite cases as well as case studies of cities that had removed. Breed specific language from their codes. So what came about from our last discussion was really council wanting further clarification on enforcement and penalties for the leash law. As well as what happens during the process when we have dangerous dogs, vicious dog or dog bite cases. Regardless of what type of breed it comes from. So just jumping into the leash law real quick, animal control and animal control officers of the Tri-City Animal Control Association. Or Authority are the primary responders to what they are called as a dog at large cases. They respond to those calls, law enforcement often refers the calls, if they see that out in the field, to animal control. Really, the initial contact is to find the owner of the dog that is at large, that is off leash and provide education to that owner. Our Animal Control Authority does take a photo and keep a file kept on that dog tying it to the address. If it's a habitual offense, if they're off leash or if they're getting out and they're at large. Tickets and infractions do get issued at that time. And the photo and the file are kept mainly so you could respond and then just kind of reference, yes, this dog has been out. We know who this dog is, that sort of thing. But that's typically what we do with the leash law there, it's education first enforcement and then infractions afterwards. The process for any potentially dangerous, dangerous dog, vicious dogs and dog bites, really, obviously, animal control is the primary responder to this. The the severity of the case and the severity of the bite is the discretion is up to the discretion of the animal control officer. The situation is calmed down. Whether the dog needs to be impounded or returned to the owner is at the discretion of the officer. And there's a discussion with the victim, which determines the severity and course of action. So sometimes in my discussion with the Shelter Director, sometimes you see, you know, victims like, oh, it's okay. It's not a big deal, just wanted to call and let you know. And then sometimes it's a pretty severe case or the owner wants, you know. Uh, it's not a big deal, just wanted to call and and let you know, and then sometimes it's a pretty severe case or the owner wants, you know, action taken, so. Um, education is provided at first um, to the owner of the dog. Um, and infraction is uh, next, putting forth a ticket uh, in the case. Um, it is always case-dependent, um, sometimes in in particularly uh, uh, vicious cases, the dog is impounded right away. Um, but usually there's a a provision there to get a permit to keep a dog that is potentially dangerous. Now, this is. Um, as we look to with our cases and not necessarily tied to breed. Um, I do need to further clarify some data on this slide, so. Um, it's not necessarily a ten-day compliance, so I apologize that the in- information's out of order on this slide. Um, what happens in this case is uh, a permit is required. And uh, you have ten days to appeal the determination from animal control that your dog is dangerous. Um, the permit requires a proper enclosure for the animal, a sign posting, conspicuous sign posting on the property. And then the addition of an insurance rider, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of coverage. Um, on homeowner or renters insurance and then uh, notification of uh, the surrounding neighbors as well, that your dog has been determined that. To be potentially dangerous. Um, there is a control and confinement uh, requirement there, which really is the leash and muzzle. So uh, the dog has to be confined to the property, um, when it is out outside of the property, it has to be on leash and with a muzzle. And um, there is the good citizen training or equivalent um, requirement and it's basically, you can apply for that to provide exemption. Um, for your dog to not be declared potentially dangerous. Uh, animal control officers follow up and track the cases, of course. Um, they follow up on, to make sure that permits are put into place, that all the uh. Proper enclosure, signposting, insurance and notification is taken care of. Um, if there's no compliance or if there's repeat compliance, then the case is turned over to the city prosecutor. And um, we uh, the the determinations within the code is that a violation is a gross misdemeanor. Now, we do have. Uh, Craig Briggs from the Attorney's Office on the line as well. Uh, Craig, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, so I'll just add a few things. Um, uh, when I, when I did discuss this with uh, our our city prosecutors, they mentioned that, yes, they do. Uh, involve themselves in these cases and instances where uh, uh. A declaration has been made or or a finding has been made by a hearing examiner concerning. Uh, potentially dangerous and and dangerous dogs, uh, where the those dogs are are unpermitted, um. There's uh, prosecution efforts that are made by our city prosecutors. They uh, that office did indicate um. Some limitations and some potential things that they would like to see addressed with regard to uh. The prosecution process, the 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 first concern that was noted was um, with regard to a transfer of ownership, so. Uh, it was stated that oftentimes what occurs during this process is uh, that that owner. Uh, transfers ownership of that dog and then comes uh, into court and and uh, indicates that they no longer possess that dog and. And therefore can't be subject to those requirements. Uh, and so uh, potentially some form of a certification process. Uh, to place that um, that responsibility on the owner. Um, and I think we could get creative in that regard, but uh, at a minimum. Maybe a a notice requirement that would require them to uh, notify that the purchasing party, party that indeed they're purchasing a dog that's subject to a. Uh, potentially dangerous animal um, finding or or dangerous animal finding. And to document where that transfer occurs so that those uh, permitting requirements can be imposed. Uh, and then also, uh, there was a concern about uh, during the appeal process. Uh, after a finding has been made with regard to uh, uh, potentially dangerous dog or dangerous dog. Um, that uh, uh, the limitation there is that um, that finding cannot be enforced. Uh, uh, without some language in our code that uh, allows for that pending um. A a state of that enforcement action. Uh, and so those were the two points that really the Prosecutor's Office. Uh, saw as um, uh, limiting factors and I think those are things that we could address um. Pretty easily in our code uh, with with some language changes to make sure that those aren't aren't barriers to enforcement.
Thank you, Craig, and um. So in a sense, the item brought before you this evening is the same uh, draft ordinance with the additional information on um, enforcement. And uh, what the what what degree of the violations are. Um, staff uh, was pointed out through uh, uh, that there might be some language that we need to amend further into the code to match. Um, should council choose to remove uh, breed-specific language, then we would need to match some of the enforcement uh, and and. And go through the the remaining code section to see if there's any um, uh, additional references to breed-specific uh, language. Uh, within the code and then anything additional um, as proposed by Mr. Briggs this evening, so. Uh, with that, um, staff is here for any questions that council may have.
Thank you, uh, Director Radkai, uh, staff, uh, excuse me, uh, council. Do you have comments or questions? I know this is a topic that we've been working on for quite some time and you know, I I. I I guess I wanna give an opportunity, uh, is there any any commented questions from council?
Yeah, I I I have a comment, um. You know, obviously, as as Director Radkai said, I I think if we move forward with. It's not a strike through on this paragraph, there are some flow-through that needs to be taken care of so that it, it's it's matched up. Um, this does seem like a fairly measured approach. Um, a- and I think, you know, as the city attorney works with our staff. I would like to ensure that if we do move forward with these types of amendments, that there are adequate punitive measures for. Quite frankly, not any dangerous breed, but any dog that is, you know, a habitual biter. And that could be anything from an ankle-biter Chihuahua uh, that draws minimal harm. Um, you know, I know. For example, my my middle child, she's scared of dogs of all shapes and sizes because she's been both chased and bitten from little to small. Um, and I too have, so maybe it's something in the Serrano genes, I don't know. But uh, regardless, you know, obviously, I'm not terrified of dogs and and, but you know, I'm also not five. So I guess I just wanna make sure that uh, you know, whether it's. I don't wanna make it punitive to own animals, but I do wanna ensure that we're protecting citizens if we do. Modify this uh, ordinance here.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Serrano. Uh, Councilmember, I mean, excuse me, Councilmember Maloney, do you have a comment?
Yeah, just briefly, um, I I I don't disagree with anything Mr. Serrano said, um, and uh, if there's, if there's appropriate strengthening of our of our laws to. To make sure that we don't have, uh, you know, roaming dogs that are causing real harm, um, which, I mean, I think we've all seen at various points of times. Um, it's, you know, um, if if there's ways we can do that, I'm supportive with that. Um, if we, if we can't complete that action by December seventh, I I I support continuing to move forward with um, with a vote on the. Ordinance or the modified ordinance um, um, as discussed tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, for Maloney, Member Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I I just wanna echo my uh, my colleagues here and I think uh. There's definitely a need for a measured approach. Uh, there's a reason why uh, people build fences and sometimes you figure out, what was the fence, that fence there? To begin with, oh yeah, that's reason. And there's also sometimes where there's fences that were built that were like, why does this fence ever exist? Let's take it down. And so I think that um, I I appreciate staff's thought about this uh, to to think deeply about it and to not just say, oh, wait, council wants this and. Um, and so I really appreciate the uh, um, the measured approach and I I think, you know, if this requires a little time to do it right. You know, let's do it right.
Thank you, Councilmember Alvarado. And I will, uh, anybody else? Well, I will, uh, uh. My comment to this subject is this. I really appreciate and I wish I could, uh, that I was technical, uh, technical enough to go. Back and forth to show uh, the person and maybe Mr. Zabel can remember who it was. Uh, provided an email on a history of the dog uh, ordinance and I really appreciated that message. It was thorough. Clear and concise and I appreciate everybody who responded. Um, to or in favor of changing this ordinance and this breed-specific law. I wanna make it very clear as uh, for me personally, it's not about the pit bulls, it's about. Dogs that damage or harm any any child or any person. And it just, uh, as Serrano indicated, you know, about the protection of our citizens and our children and to make sure that they're. Are gonna be terrified to go outside their lawn into the neighbors or into their residence and be terrified by. Uh, somebody's pet. So with that said, um. I will uh, agree with Councilmember Maloney to move forward. I, I would really encourage staff to. To move forward with uh, making sure it all matches and then we can move forward on. Uh, the breed-specific part of this and uh, but again, to make sure we're holding the people, the owners of the. Responsible, um, so that, again, our citizens can be uh, in their neighborhood and not have to be in fear of somebody's. Uh, pet hurting them, so thank you very much for that. Mr. Director Radkai, is that, is that good enough? Uh, enough information to move forward?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, I and the legal team will make the proper corrections and bring forth a draft ordinance for consideration on December seventh.
Be Director Radkai, appreciate it. All right. If that's, if that's all for that topic, we will move right along to the next one and that is item E, December two thousand twenty. Council meeting cancellations. Uh, Mr. Zabel.
I I know this may be unpopular with the council, but it's something we do need to talk about and um. So we don't have a whole lot scheduled, uh, per planned because council uh, had some pretty heavy agendas the last couple of months. And uh, we'll be uh, wrapping up the year with most of our action items on December seventh, so staff is recommending. Uh, that council cancel their second uh, regular meeting in December of December twenty-first as well as the. The two workshop meetings on the schedule for the fourteenth and twenty-eighth. This is something councils typically done in December, uh, provided our. Our work allows, uh, this year it does and uh, as we've had in the past, if an item comes up that uh, council needs to act on. Prior to the end of the year, uh, we we do have the ability to hold a special meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Zabel, uh, Councilmember Maloney.
Uh, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Mr. Zabel, um, I'm just surprised you put it on this agenda, not the other one. I think we would have moved and approved it tonight if you'd let us, so anyways. I'm in support.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Maloney. And yes, um, you know, this is a time that we can focus. Um, because of how busy we've been, it it, you know, in spite of the pandemic and how busy we've been this year. Uh, this is uh, refreshing, however, I know, I know uh, our council and I know we have a lot of activities that we're gonna participate in. Um, such as the Christmas tree lighting and things of that nature that we're gonna continue to work with the city and 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 be active. And communicate with our citizens, so, uh, yes, Mr. Zabel, thank you very much and we'll move forward with. With what you have presented tonight.
I appreciate that. I didn't wanna surprise the council next week.
All right, thank you for that. With that, we'll move right along to. Okay, so we can move right along to our next topic, which is miscellaneous council discussion. I know Councilmember Alvarado had uh. Some comments that you wanted to share.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and um, looking back at my email, I was able to get the information. But it did, uh, the the email did state it was confidential, so there might be some uh, need to uh, ask for permission before me sharing anything, any specifics. So I'll 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 come back uh, next week if that's the case.
Okay. All right, any other council member with miscellaneous council discussion? Councilmember Serrano?
Sure, uh, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to call attention to the letter that you and the other three mayors. So collectively four mayors signed out uh, late last week. I just wanted to express my appreciation because this rightly recognizes the efforts made by our local businesses. And um. I know a handful of friends that are really, really struggling right now. Um, they've had opportunity to live their dreams. And um, they've done everything they can to uh, comply with the requirements. Both by the local health department and by the um, governor's efforts. So I really appreciate that uh, the four of you signed out a letter recognizing those efforts and. Um, requesting that the governor not push back uh, and force them to potentially ultimately close their doors. Um, because that's, that's not what we need. I think we all recognize there are um, some significant. Issues with COVID, obviously Councilman Alvarado was calling attention to an individual who passed due to COVID. Um, but we also need to recognize our our local businesses and the efforts and the expenditures that they've made to provide safe. Facilities for each of us to uh, continue to support our neighbors, so I just wanted to say thank you for that. I really appreciate that.
I appreciate it, for Serrano. Um, I, I guess I would just like to add to that, that uh, when, when I signed to that letter, I know there's a fine line between. Um, agreeing to sign something like that, that represents the council and represents. Um, my, the point of view of a specific uh, mayor or or elected official. And I, and I understand there's a fine line there, but when I was uh, that that letter was intended. Uh, to advocate for our businesses and our community who have been struggling. And you know, because Franklin and Benton County have been kind of in a unique situation where we were held in phase one for a very, very long time. It was just like. Uh, it it just, it just adds on to the uh, to the hardship for our business owners and this. This letter was in no way and anyway, uh, a message of not caring for our citizens and that. Wanted us to be safe. I I don't know how much more I can advocate for us to do what's right, to protect our citizens. And encourage our citizens to uh, take care of themselves and understand if there's families with. Um, people with underlying issues or elderly people or somebody who's sensitive. Uh, to please, please use all precautions possible and don't go to places where there's people that may have. Uh, you know, spread this virus. But in this particular case, um. Uh, you know, it's just a constant, constant. Uh, uh, struggle for these small businesses and and I realize. Uh, that, you know, it, I've been pulled in every direction with this, with this decision because uh. You know, we, it it's just so hard to direct everybody to do what we think is right. When in reality, everybody should take care of themselves and we're advocating for that always. But at the same time, as Mr. Serrano indicated, there's people whose dreams are underlined now and um. And again, we're not advocating for you to, for anyone to go to a store, for anyone to visit those places. We're just advocating for the opportunity to be open because in many cases, not all cases, maybe, but many cases. These places are actually safer because they're um, they're actually governed orders. It's providing, making sure there's social distancing, making sure there's hand sanitizer, making sure uh, that things are cleaned every so often, so. In in many cases, one could argue that it's a safer place to be, but you know, obviously, there's difference of opinion, so. That was the intention of of signing that form and I wanna make that public. Um, in no way, and I am very careful if there was, if there was a situation where uh. I was not adhering to an ordinance or uh, doing something that was out of line, I would be more than happy to retract. Anything that I would uh, that I would uh, agree to sign of that nature. Uh, but in this case, um, you know, sometimes um. You know, we we have to make calls on the spot and we don't have the the liberty or the uh, the time to, you know, go through a full process. Uh, but I would, you know, when there, when there's an opportunity, I I want more than our council to come as unity and come with solutions and come with. Uh, ways to uh, to make things better for everyone. Um, but uh, but in this case, um, you know, I I felt, I felt obligated, uh, not obligated, but I felt. Uh, that need to support uh, the whole Tri-Cities in this, in this area, so that's why I did what I did, so, uh, thank you very much for that. Uh, Councilmember Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and um, I actually wanted to speak on this topic as well, so um, so thank you for both for that, for that good introduction and and laying that groundwork. Um, and I guess what I'm gonna say something that's, that's, I. I wish I had been thinking of more clearly uh, earlier, but I'll be honest, until the governor tightened back the orders. I thought we were on a good trend and that we didn't really need to have further discussion as a council because we were moving in the right direction. We were starting to push back in the right ways and things were progressing well. Well, that's unfortunately turned very rapidly. Um, and unfortunately. So I I guess what what I I would I I wish we'd done before, and I I don't know if we have the opportunity to now. But in essence, um, I would love for us to kind of as a council establish equivalent of our legislative agenda as to here's the things we need out of the governor, out of the legislature, um, out of our county, um, out of the health district, and how here's how we want to advocate for City of Pasco. Um, I mean, with that letter, I felt un- unfortunately lacked some of those details of of asking for specific things to help. And so I think the governor is not going to be not going to take that and do anything with it. Unfortunately, I think just like our previous letters, he's going to ignore it. Um, and that which is, you know, to me unfortunate. So um, you know, we we've we've talked about in the past, perhaps that, you know, sending just to the governor, maybe that's not enough. And maybe we need to be talking to our legislators more actively, especially if they're coming back into session. So I guess I'd like to propose that we um, we see if we can kind of try to consolidate on what what we really need for our businesses to make them successful. Um, it'll be that be that pushing back on um on on these restrictions, be that um, you know, our ability to open our council chambers so we can have some of these open discussions with with our constituents. Um, additional aid, whatever that right package is, I guess I'm not sure that we as a council have have really gelled around one thing. Um, and that makes it hard, I think, for us to be able to advi- advocate for um, for for the things that we all believe are the right things, um, whatever whatever those may be. Um, I know that, for example, um, one of my biggest i- issues with the current restrictions is we see all these businesses, all these restaurants putting up these tents outside. Well, these tents are sealed spaces. It's the same bloody thing, only it's expensive, it's cold, it's annoying. Um, I I don't see how these are in any way, shape or form safer than being inside the restaurant, right? And so so I'm just using one example. This is just my my personal personal opinion you're hearing here. So I think some of these restrictions have nothing to do with the risk of transmission. But instead, these again, these blanket orders that have been, I think, um, we've been suffering through for for the whole time. So um, while I believe that there, you know, there's there's necessary um measures that we need to put in place as a community to help those to to make sure that this this virus isn't being transmitted, we also need to figure out how to do it in a smart way. And I think that's where I want to see us start to advocate for is how do we how do we do that? I mean, I could list off a couple of things tonight. I'm not, I know we're going, because as we're talking about, we're we're running very closely, running out of the year. But I would like I'd like to see if perhaps there's a way that staff could kind of pull some of these ideas together, maybe with our um, maybe with our state lobbyists and figure out maybe what's the best way we can advocate, really advocate for what's right for Pasco.
And and I appreciate that very much, uh, Councilmember Maloney. I can tell you that uh, you know, I i- it's not something we really aspire to do in writing letters like this. Uh, I will tell you that um, in this case, we have um a meeting set up for Wednesday uh to have a discussion uh with the representative from the governor group uh to to come up with solutions. So at a minimum, you know, at least this, you know, sparked up a little, well, let's let's see what they have to say. And that's where we'll, you know, come up with those ideas. And and I know that we can sit together as a council and try to think of all those things. And and we should, there's no, there's no question, I think, we need, well, that's what we're supposed to do. Is hey, how can we improve these things just as you described? So so I I'm I'm good with it. Uh, we'll try to make some more time to to uh to come up with some times that we can unite. But obviously, right now, it's it's pretty tough with under the conditions. But I appreciate your comment. I appreciate uh your your, you know, your uh ideas. And and we're more than happy to to work, like, we've always worked hard to to, you know, come up with the best ways for our community to be safe and and for everybody to to get through this.
So I guess my recommendation, uh, Mr. Mayor, would be, uh, perhaps we can, staff can help facilitate some of these things and maybe bring together some thoughts on our December seventh meeting. And that way you'll have the full full weight of the council behind you when you sign these letters, that you will know we're march all marching down in the same direction. So you're not just hanging out there as 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 uh Mr. Martinez signing a letter. Um, but instead, here's here's what the Pasco City Council um believes and is advocating for.
Well, and and just for the record, I mean, if ever I um, you know, I would I would actually make it a point to say that this is uh on behalf of the council, if if, you know, before, I would never say that without you guys, uh, without the rest of the council's approval, just just for the record.
Wasn't suggesting anything else, but I just wanted to make sure that um, if we can put that support behind you, then I'd rather do that um, for the efforts that I know you've taken so many, so much of your time and so much of your energy this year to help advocate for. Um, that's all. Thank you.
All right, well, uh, you can take that, Mr. Zabel, and and uh, see we see what we can come up with.
Absolutely. We'll put some work on that.
Councilmember Alvarado, did you have another comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to um reiterate what I stated a few months ago, that I'm very proud of uh you, uh, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I think you're doing your best uh with the resources that we have and uh you have represented as well. Uh, uh, you know, I think uh signing something like that, I think has some uh uh obviously some uh and you know, i- it does come across as it's, it comes from the city and the council. Um, and and so obviously, that that's a hard, that's a call, hard call to make. And I just want to commend you by just being able to tell us why you did what you did. And, you know, obviously, we would love to be able to put like uh, Councilmember Maloney has stated, put our full weight behind things and perhaps give it a little more thought. Uh, but yeah, I mean, I I I appreciate um, you know, what what you stated and the reasons you you uh, you did what you did. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? All right, well, with that, then uh
I think Councilman Maloney is speaking, isn't he?
There he is, Council Councilmember Miloney, go ahead. You're you're still muted, Councilmember. Go ahead. We'll 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 wait.
Okay, um, thank you. Yeah, I I also wanted to say that uh when I read that letter, I was probably the most I've ever been proud of our mayor, Saul Martinez. He just, it really put into words as a business owner in the downtown part of Pasco, how I feel and believe in um, just, I worry about my neighbors and the people downtown just staying in business. So I really appreciate you stepping up and uh fighting for Pasco, and it is a dream. And, you know, again, I don't want people to just get sick or die. But uh, you know, when you don't have a dream, you do die inside. So I guess I just really wanted to say I really appreciate that letter and uh I really thought it was really well worded. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, with that, um, thank you once again, council, for another another good meeting. And uh, there's no, uh, Mr. Zabel, there's no need for an executive session?
Not this evening.
All right, well, then it is eight fifty seven and uh we'll see you next week. This meeting is now adjourned.